Two seconds.
You can do it countdown.
That way it's easy to go, right when it needs to.
Yeah, there you go, that's true. All right, a full minute.
All right, the August fourth, twenty twenty five Middlebury Town Council meeting will be called to order. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kent Kaufman?
Here.
Mike Holloway?
Here.
Eric Kreip?
Here.
Laurel Miller?
Here.
And Kevin Miller?
Here.
All right, we have the minutes for the July twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting.
A motion, we accept the minutes of the July twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this time we'll open the floor for public comments.
Um, I thought I would have a proposal tonight, but they didn't get it prepared, but I'd like to add item eight J for Water Tower number two, a report that needs to be done.
Consider it added.
Carl, I have something I'd like to say.
Sure.
Okay. At the last meeting, uh, it was brought to the front by Mrs. Kaiser, quite a few questions, two of them concerned Steve Kreip, and I'd like to address those, to get that out there. Uh, one of the questions was, why is he on the leadership team? And the other was, why after two years would the town still be relying on third party for the operations of the water department? To answer the first question, Mr. Kreip is listed on the town council agenda as a water operator for the town of Middlebury because he serves in the role of the certified water operator listed on IDEM's paperwork for the town and is an integral part of the day-to-day operations of the water department. And why after two years we have in the past and are currently still accepting applications for a certified water operator? The town has received a couple of applications, we have not found a candidate that agrees to serve in this role. The water department staff have been taking classes and learning from Steve Kreip on the proper operation of a water treatment plant. At this time, the current staff does not have the certifications to serve in that capacity. The town of Middlebury has a contract with Ergo Resource Management, who is Steve's actual employer. And Ergo Resource Management has assigned Steve to serve as the Middlebury's point of contact. Without a certified water operator, the town of Middlebury would be in violation of IDEM's rules to provide safe drinking water. The entire state of Indiana has a shortage of certified water operators, and Middlebury is not alone in its search for the certified water operator. I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right, uh, for consideration, the expense vouchers.
A motion, we approve and accept the expense vouchers as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions?
I have one question, it's, it's, it's small and tiny, but I saw a few things in there like Power Strip or, uh, you know, just things like we run to the hardware store and get. Have we, um, like reached out to Varus and somebody and said, hey, if we buy these things here, there's a ten percent or twelve percent or, have we tried that? You know, for, for those kinds of things. I did it as a business here in town, and so they were willing to do that.
That particular, um, one, that employee went to, was just out shopping, and he wasn't even gonna turn the receipt in, he was just gonna buy it.
No, can't let that, no.
And, and I'm like, no, and he had already bought it because he was out to the store. That's the only reason that one is that way, typically we do buy local.
Okay, I just didn't know if we had reached out to him about, if we were doing, they do?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that answers my question.
I was gonna say, I-
It didn't have anything to do with that particular one, it just got me thinking about, hey, do we have a, you know, ongoing, here's your five percent or whatever it is? Okay, yep.
All right, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, unfinished business, uh, street light, street lighting in Westlake Estates.
So in your packet was some information, um, we went out and did an actual count of all the NIPSCO lights that's in each of the subdivisions. So Rolling Meadows has five NIPSCO lights, um, in all houses within the newer section, they have their own yard lights. Dawn Estates subdivision has nine NIPSCO lights, Twin Oaks has seven, and Highland Hills subdivision has twelve. So I just thought, um, to be fair, to bring it back, um, with regards to the Westlake request, um, I, I don't know where you want it.
Well, I think now that we've, you know, all been educated that in fact they do have lights, because I'm so used to daytime travel and I'll see them. Um, and the newer sections like in, um, Rolling Meadows where there are, there were driveway lights put up and no telephone poles because there are no overhead lines. Um, that, um, if we do that for those subdivisions and have that, are there any parts of Westlake where there are driveway lights? Is there any newer section that has them?
I don't think until you get to Spring, Spring Valley, that you-
Okay, okay.
I was gonna say, there might be a few homes that might have a driveway light, but it would be very few and sporadic.
Okay.
Yeah, the only one I know of is across the road from us. We don't have, Westlake Drive and the back section don't have overhead power lines in front of the houses, they're in the back of the houses.
Okay.
So there are places where there are no poles, so there would need to be a pole added for those locations where we want to put lights.
Layman's behind you have one, because we've dropped kids off there.
Right, and they're, they're, that house is only about ten years old, so.
And so, I'm sorry.
That road back there doesn't have any-
Stacy Lane in the back does not.
There's no lights on that one or poles or anything.
There, isn't there one that's facing a, a-
A pole, yes, yes, there is.
So in the, in the Westlake area, are, are we considering the lights, like at those intersections that we pointed out? And the one used to have one, and so at the, I can see the need and the safety for at those intersections throughout Westlake Estates. Is that, am I thinking right?
That would be accurate, yeah, that'd be a fair statement.
And Mary, you were gonna get us some costs or something for lights or?
So if there's an existing NIPSCO pole, there's no, there's no cost, it's just eventually, um, caught up in the invoice per light, you know, monthly cost. Um, but if they have to put in a pole, it just all depend, there's a lot of factors that go into that, so I couldn't get a cost, um, of what it would cost to do a pole.
And you were saying, if a member serves right, seven to nine dollars a month?
I think it was nine to twelve.
Or nine to nine to twelve.
Something like that.
And then, and then they provide the light?
Yes.
Okay, so we just say we'd like to have them here, here, and here?
Yeah.
And when the slow wheels of government get there, they put them in?
Yes.
And, and each intersection will get them, except I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy and Kimberly, that was the only one not gonna get one, because there's no-
Well, originally we just said at Claire and thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And Westlake.
And then US twenty and Westlake, and so I-
Entrances.
Entrances, right.
So I wasn't sure if we wanted to add before I started this whole ball rolling, because you start it with, it's just easiest to start everything at the same point, you know, instead of having two going and then three going, I'd just rather put it all into one package.
If we did them at each intersection, how many lights are we talking? Five, was it?
Oh, I thought it was seven.
Was it seven?
I think it was seven total.
I think so.
But that was adding one pole, is that correct?
One pole, yep.
Because we're at, um, I'm trying to see the different counts.
Well, here, here's-
We just tried to do it at the intersections.
Okay.
All the subdivisions, well, except-
So Rolling Meadows has five, and that's because it's the old section that actually has poles. Dawn Estates has nine, Twin Oaks, seven, Highland Hills, twelve, so seven lands within the reasonable number-
Seven to nine.
For others, to our other subdivisions.
Right.
Um, what about the area, we don't call it a subdivision, you know, the area north of Harding, like the, you know, Scott Mill.
East side.
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't do downtown, but there's a lot, almost every intersection has a light.
Has a street light.
In those back there.
Yeah.
I mean, seven-
In the side street.
Or so, doesn't seem like an unreasonable number for what we have in the other subdivisions. Um, particularly planning to light the intersection. Um, seems safe to me. Marshall?
And I apologize, I didn't see the-
Right.
The proposal, I, I, it's, it's not on here for the Westlake Estates, right?
Yeah, we didn't include it in this time, but I think there was seven.
Might as well do it the same as all, all of these other developments.
Well, and I, and I, I mean, I just, you know, talked right past you, sorry, and that's to Marshall what he thought, and he's like, yes, like there is this, I can see the safety factor, uh, being a big deal there, yeah, in Westlake Estates.
Yeah.
The neighborhood too.
Security as well, yes. Yep, sure. And that cost doesn't seem prohibitive to me.
Yeah, I would think the addition of one back in the back in Stacy Lane.
At the cul-de-sac?
Back at the cul-de-sac or near that cul-de-sac, because that's a very dark area.
Okay.
So still not one at Stacy and Kimberly, but in the cul-de-sac?
No, I think that-
Well, that, it, it's quite a distance from that intersection that goes back into the woods.
I was thinking there wasn't gonna be one at Stacy and Kimberly if I, and if I, if-
No, I thought there was.
There is.
There is.
There is a pole there already.
There's a pole there.
This back here, with all the trees on here.
Right.
This is pretty dark back in there as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just have to make sure that we talk with the residents back there.
Right.
We gotta make sure somebody wants-
Some may not want it.
Yeah, you know who I'm talking about.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna-
They didn't want the fire hydrant in their yard.
We don't want to offend anybody or get in anybody's way either. They absolutely don't want that.
We'll reach out to them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Okay.
We don't want to put anything up that's gonna be a hindrance, we would, we would like safety, that'd be good.
Yeah. It, I mean, it helps, I think, even when they're snow plowing and stuff too, to kind of know where the intersections are.
Yeah, yeah, the two AM plow, right?
Right.
Yeah. I can see that.
So if we make a motion for what, seven to, seven to nine lights?
I, I didn't look at the last, at last mo- meeting.
As long as I have a layaway of seven to nine, that's fine.
That'll suffice.
And it would probably be installing two new poles then, I think, so.
Yeah, but they install those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, then, I would make a motion that we allow the town manager to pursue putting seven to nine, um, lights in the Westlake Estates subdivision.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, Cummins five-year generator maintenance plan addendum revised.
Yeah, so the Cummins asked that on page two, um, it looks like under indemnity that we add the word third, third party. So it's a change to the, the addendum, um, just making sure that we get this revised addendum approved.
This is approved, Jackson. Well, then I'll make a motion that we accept the, um, addendum addition of added or add third party in the indemnity clause, uh, section seven. For, um, yeah, whoever they are.
Cummins.
Yeah, Cummins, sorry, the five-year, uh, generator maintenance plan.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, updates to the employee handbook.
So since, yeah, since the last time we discussed it, um, there weren't any major changes proposed, um, I think we were just sort of letting it percolate and giving people time to digest, we can keep doing that right now, um, if we're looking at a January one effective date, so just wanted to keep it, um, at the top of your mind. I have prepared an ordinance if we wanted to adopt it at this meeting, I can also, we can do that at the next one as well. I think last we discussed, the items we needed guidance on were the vacation hours and how that calculation, and it seemed like what I had proposed was what the council was, was comfortable with moving forward on.
Yes.
Um, so I didn't need any other changes made to the handbook, and I didn't hear any other comments from anybody, but if, if anyone wants more time to, it's a, you know, it's a big handbook, so there's no rush at this time, but-
I kind of think you covered most of that, you tech that pretty well.
And superintendents, you guys are okay with the new wording? Or the new, uh-
Guess you'll find out when you get there, right?
Yeah. Do you have any changes that you're looking, any additional? No?
No, not right now.
From what I read, everything looked, looked fine.
Yep, yep.
Reason to drag that out anymore than there is.
Well, I think last we checked, it was ordinance seven fifteen, is that?
That is, sounds correct, because we had, I didn't change the ordinance number since, yeah.
And this will go in effect the end of the year?
January one, twenty twenty six.
I'll make a motion that we accept the new revised handbook updates, the employee handbook, uh, effective January one, twenty twenty six.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. Now, new business, uh, request for road closure for the Fall Festival.
So we have, um, the chamber director Carmen Carpenter here, and I'll let her go over, um, her request for road closures.
Um, the festival, uh, we are starting to run into a little bit of trouble because it's growing so much, so we are requesting that we can actually start using the parks, um, on Tuesday instead of on Wednesday. We need another day to prep the area, and, uh, it hasn't, it wasn't an issue for Summer Festival, I'm hoping it's not an issue for Fall Festival, and then that would run through September sixth. We have the Ryzen Run, the five K, I know that Paula Turk, she came and presented to you, and I believe that that all went through, um, smoothly. Uh, that will be kicking off at eight o'clock, and it will begin and end both on State Street, just as a reminder, and the proceeds for that race will support the Middlebury Food Pantry. Uh, but we are requesting for the festival, the closure of Brown, uh, Brown Street, Bristol Avenue, and State Street, um, from the beginning of the festival, uh, in the early morning on Thursday, because that's when the vendors actually start trinkling in, and we're looking at, uh, a seven AM for that, and then until Saturday, September sixth, around five o'clock, when the vendors start pulling out. We have always, um, the guys have always dropped off the barricades, and then at the, we put them out at the given time, and then we pull them back at the end, and then they pick them back up, so we'll continue to do that as well. Uh, the only thing that, uh, we did this for Summer Fest as well, but I just want to, um, remind you that it is a change for twenty twenty five, is we would like to have, um, Bristol Street, or Bristol Avenue closed from Main Street all the way down, where before it was started at Brown and went down, but we are putting vendors on the street there. We are very conscious about making sure that they're not blocking anything at the fire department and stopping them at the edge of the park and just using that area there, and then leaving the opening there around the fire department, and then continuing having it closed, going, which direction would that be? West? Get hold of-
Northwest.
Northwest, yeah.
West, um, just-
Back to railroad.
Yes, to railroad, correct. Just leaving that closed for, you know, emergency vehicles and, you know, traffic for the, the committee to get in. So that's the only changes that, um, we have, we are going to, um, request that State Street remain closed during the festival as well, but we did that for Summer Fest, so we're just growing, and it, it's easier to be safe than sorry.
Uh, and the, uh, one question, the, the fire department's okay with vendors being located on that section of Bristol?
They don't have any problem because they shoot out and go the opposite direction, and I make absolutely sure that where that privacy fence is there at Memorial Park, that we don't go any further than there. So we aren't blocking anything, and we don't use their parking area for the township or anything.
Right, yeah.
We make sure that's all not accessible to anyone.
Good.
Well, I'll make a motion, huh? Any issue with using the parks on Tuesday instead of Wednesday, starting the parks on Tuesday, Marshall, anything? Any of the street closures, oh, okay with you, Marshall? Okay.
And we don't close on Tuesday, we don't close, we're just in the parks marking.
Yeah, 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 right, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's what we have grown to, we have, um, like sixty-eight vendors, and it used to be like-
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, it just takes us longer, and we just need that extra day.
Sure, I get it, yeah. All right, well, I can make, make a motion that we approve the request for road closures and the park use for the Fall Festival.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I thank you for your continuous support.
Thank you.
Thank you for going on the festival.
Permit for a billboard?
So Lamar Science met with me on March, or I'm sorry, May twenty first to discuss a propose, proposal for putting up a digital billboard on US twenty. Um, they would, they would have to have a lease agreement with the owner of the Shell station, and, um, their billboard would either be two hundred and forty-two square feet or three hundred square feet with a total height of thirty-five feet. So in your packet, there was a, um, the proposed digital billboard there on US twenty shown in their pictures. Um, it would have eight second flips, and it would be static. So when we look at this, we look at their existing signage, and the Shell station already has a sign that is six foot by twelve foot, and it has two sides, so it's a hundred and forty-four square feet. So the new billboard, um, will require a petition for a variance, um, from the sign regulations, since the maximum allowable signage on a property is two hundred and fifty square feet. Um, total, so that would include both sides. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mary?
Yep.
Why are they still using a five-digit in all this letterhead? Can't be a five-digit, or we wouldn't be making the decision.
Um, that is how the property is listed on GIS, it's still in the town.
It's got all about three digits, doesn't it?
It, it's in the town, but I, I don't know, I looked on GIS, and that's one thing that I need to work with Elkhart County of getting that, um, updated.
Yeah, wonderful.
It's listed in GIS, that's one, two, five, four.
Well, that's interesting.
So if we proceed with a variance, or, you know, like proceed with a variance, a hearing for a variance, um, then we'll need to advertise for that public hearing. There has not been a sign, signage review board meeting in quite a few years, and the last members were appointed in twenty twenty-two, they were Chuck Teel, he was the town representative. Merlin Miller, he was the citizen representative, and Dan Frederick was the business representative. I've not reached out to him, um, I wasn't sure how he wanted to proceed with this. If we take it, if we have a sign board, then they would give you a recommendation, we'd still have to advertise for a public hearing, um, to gather input from people. So anyway, I just basically told the, uh, Lamar Science that we have to like figure some things out, um, and I would let him know where the next steps were after I met with you tonight.
So do, let me ask you, do we need a, um, signage review board in order to, um, make a recommendation or to say, you know, pursue it with, um, you know, do we need that board? Signage review board?
I'm gonna have to-
Jackson?
While Jackson's looking at it, my question would be is-
I mean, ultim- I think the ultimate decision is with this, with this board, so, um-
Yeah, I can-
The signage review board makes a recommendation.
Yeah, or not, right? Like the signage review board.
The town council makes its decision after receiving the report of the signage review.
That's, yeah, I was wondering if it was written that way.
And on hearing.
And, and the thing about the signage review board is the mix of, uh, citizen, so town rep, citizen rep, and a business rep. And so, uh, I would feel more comfortable if we had a current signage review board, because there's a couple of other places I'd like them to look at. Um, to review whether or not places are in compliance, um, with the current signage, and trying to read that is like, um, because Jackson was kind enough to print it off for me one time, but, um, so I, I wouldn't, I would like to see a, an updated or a new, or either new or reconfirmed signage reviewer board because of the business rep and the citizen rep, I think that's important. Um, and then, of course, the way our thing is written, it says, you know, review it, so.
So would you like me to reach out to these three, well, I guess Dan Frederick, I don't know if he's retired or not?
He's retired now, yeah.
Okay.
But he's still living in town.
Yeah, so we, we would have to-
Would he represent the business if he's no longer, you know what I mean?
Right, that's what I'm saying, is-
He's working at all. Yeah, so we'd probably need somebody new there.
Does the chamber have any?
Well, we could ask her, but she left. Well, we could reach out to her and say, is there anybody that would be, that she would recommend, yeah, that would be a good representative for the business, as the business representative. But I think it's, you know, since we haven't had this, it should be a great time to reconstruct and re-energize the signage review board.
So for the town, current town representative, do we want, do we want to have somebody from this?
I, I think it should be somebody from the council.
Yeah.
Do you agree, Mr. President?
I agree.
And, and was that just appointed? I'm sorry.
It's appointed.
Who was the third person?
Um, it was Merlin Miller, and he was the citizen representative.
Oh, okay.
So Dan Frederick could potentially be the citizen representative if you wanted to-
True. Yeah.
Continue.
Yep, that's true.
We just really haven't had a need.
Sure.
You know, until now.
As far as the appointments go, there's no terms, it's just they serve at the pleasure of the town council, so until their successor's appointed.
Okay.
Um, so whenever we do the appointment, we just say, you know, the previous ones are revoked or unappointed, and new ones are appointed.
New ones are appointed, okay.
Yeah.
And I don't, I did, wasn't, I don't know when that would have been, I would have, wouldn't have been the town attorney at that time, but do we do like a resolution just to have a record of it? Or just in the minutes?
Just in the minutes.
Okay.
Do we need to do a resolution? I'm not opposed to that.
We don't have to, we do a resolution or memorandum, just saying that, and then you just can incorporate it, um, but yeah.
So I would say, if you don't mind, Mary, then reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, um, for, you know, the idea for a business rep, um, either of the two that were on it before, uh, Merlin or Dan, if they would be, you know, want to serve as the citizen rep. Um, and then President can appoint a council member.
You might need to put together the agendas and notice, notices for this appointed board.
I'm sure, yeah. It, it falls, all other duties.
Yeah. Excellent.
Um, again, back to your point, is it required to do this? I don't know, we have to do the public hearing, which is gonna be where we'll get the most input.
Right, right, um, I'm not sure what the impetus was for creating a signage review board. The way the ordinance reads now, um, it says you need to re, receive a report from the signage review board.
According to that, it has to happen that way.
I would say it's-
Rewrite the ordinance?
Yeah, and whether that is an appropriate, like, whether, I don't know if this is because normally zoning, because Elkhart County does have a zoning on it, and they cover signage in it. And technically, this is the more restrictive control, so I don't know if they might still need to require a variance from the county zoning as well, maybe they do, maybe they don't. Um, but this, I don't know if this is a specific statutory authorization that allows towns and jurisdictions to regulate signs similar to like the short-term rental ordinance. Normally, for land use regulations like signage and short-term rentals, you'd have to go through the zan, the, the zoning amendment process, which you have to create maps, and you have to do that, we delegate that out to the county. Only in certain circumstances where those are specifically delegated by the state legislature, which I suspect that's why it is what, the way it is, that there's some statute. That could be wrong, I don't know, maybe we just created this, but it looks like this was done in two thousand and one, so I can take a look and see if it's a-
Wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
You don't have enough to do, Jackson.
Hey, whatever.
I'm sure you got plenty of time on your hands.
I'm sure this was, the idea is just to expand the input to the business members.
And, and, and community.
And community.
Right, having one from each, I think is a good idea.
Right. So currently I would say it is, you should have a signage review board report before making any decision, otherwise your, your decision is, is lacking due process.
Oh, then we need to reach out to her and see if we can get some, for somebody on that, on that side.
Yeah.
So we'll need to just table this for tonight.
Correct, so we can do it in the proper manner.
Yes.
All right.
Mary, did you have another question that wasn't answered?
No, no, I was just gonna say, I appreciated that they are allowing emergency alerts on that, because that's a significant amount of traffic that goes through there. I mean, I know we have the downtown sign, but you know, obviously I think this one really covers a.
Wide swath.
Yeah, so again, that, that, that's a great, great idea, yeah.
It just far exceeds the allowable square footage.
By, right, a lot.
A lot.
Is that just because of the both sides?
Well, I mean, there's already a hundred and forty-four square feet with the existing Shell sign. And then you add this two hundred and forty-two, I mean, you're.
Well over.
The two hundred and fifty allowable.
Now I understand better. All right, so. All right, moving on, amendment to the Hardwoods Lift Station Agreement.
So this is an amendment with the EDA for the construction completion being amended from May fifth, twenty twenty-five to September fifth, twenty twenty-six. And with the authorized award end date being modified to January fifth, twenty twenty-seven, so that's when all of our paperwork has to be done. And so I'm needing, or what we're needing is review and approval of the EDA's amendment to this financial assistance award and then authorization for town manager to sign the amendment.
So all we're changing is just the dates.
Yeah.
Moving the dates and adding the town manager as.
Yeah.
And basically the reason is because there was, once there was a title.
NIPSCO's fault.
Yeah, it's always NIPSCO's fault.
Love blaming stuff on NIPSCO.
Title work done, there was an easement, and we didn't know that there was a NIPSCO gas line going right through the middle of where we wanted to be. So they needed to relocate and there was, it was a whole process, I never thought I was gonna get through it, but we did, we're on the other side, so, but it just delayed things.
Gotcha.
As the power goes out, because we blame NIPSCO.
Yeah. I would make a motion to approve the change, the hardwood lift station relocation.
Approve the amendment.
Approve the amendment, or thank you.
No, second.
You have a motion in a second, any comments or questions?
Are we allowing Mary as the signatory on all that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Just verifying.
Amendment as written there?
As written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, request for payment, FCI Construction Pay App number three?
So change order number three with FCI is in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. It's to include a gate valve actuator networking from one hundred, one twenty volt analog to a CAT six cable. The proposed aerator. Well, this, there's a couple of things in this, the proposed aerator has an eighteen inch outflow opening and the piping to the detention tank is a proposed sixteen inch. So they had to do a reducer and a fitting. And FCI isn't anticipating any impact to the project schedule.
I'll make a motion that we approve change order number three for water treatment plant improvements, JN twenty twenty-two zero 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 six as presented. In the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second. You have a motion in two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, request, or I'm sorry, agreement with Donna Hugh and the, with Donna Hugh for WWT P's SCADA upgrades.
Skip.
No, skip, skip the E.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Payment for FCI.
Cancel that, we're going backwards. Request for payment, FCI Construction.
Yep.
Pay up number three for water treatment plant improvements.
Yeah, so the pay up is in the amount of six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents and it's worked done in June. And all of the paperwork, which I can't believe this pay up is this many pages, but. So we're requesting your review and consideration, so that way then we can forward it on to Indiana Finance Authority.
Make a motion for pay application number three from FCI in the amount of six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents for the water treatment plant improvements. As presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we're moving on, since I don't feel like I'm reading double anymore. Agreement with Donna Hugh for SCADA upgrades for the wastewater.
Yeah, so this has been budgeted out for a few years in our five-year capital plan. It's just kind of updating the current SCADA that we have, it's pushing twelve years old now. We were trying to wait till the upgrade, when the next upgrade, we were talking like twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven area, now we're talking twenty thirty area. So already pushing twelve years old, we don't want to push our luck with it too much, being that it's been a planned item anyway. We budgeted sixty thousand, we came in right around forty-eight nine, so over budgeted a little bit, that's always good. Yeah, just looking for your approval, we're actually gonna get our own server this time, which is gonna match what water's getting with their new ignition SCADA, is what is, what the brand name of it's called. Eventually when we do have our upgrade, we're going to use ignition also, and then the plan is to have some redundancy. To be able to view as far as takes a dump, then we could, no pun intended, then we could use theirs and then vice versa. But, yeah, so that ten thousand dollar cost of the server will be able to be used still with the upgrade. So that was nice to hear also.
Right, so I'll make a motion to approve the wastewater treatment plant SCADA upgrade in the, with Donna Hugh and Associates. In the amount of forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Second.
Have a motion in a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Wastewater meg meter replacement purchase.
And then this one is just our influent flow meter, took a dump.
Pun intended, don't tell.
Pun intended. Yeah, it just started reading abnormally low, we were having some intermittent issues with it, we thought we got it fixed, we replaced the transmitter, wasn't it? So we got a quote on two different style meters, one was a ENH, which is what we currently have. Since we have a new transmitter, the spool piece, there's the actual meter itself, was quoted out fourteen seven fifty. So it actually ended up being cheaper to do a Siemens meter and new transmitter for ninety-five hundred. And mind you, we didn't pay for that transmitter because the last BL Anderson, when they calibrated it last, left the waterproof housing open, it got rain in it, so that was on their dime. But, yeah, just, stuff's getting old.
So your total cost is in that six to ten thousand, is that what you're saying or?
No, that's, that's gonna be.
The installation.
Installation.
Okay. So we don't have a total number?
Not on installation yet, I haven't got a quote back yet. It's just something we kind of gotta get moving.
So would it make sense to approve it once we get the installation costs? Otherwise we'll have, we're approving the replacement and the calibration is still an estimate, is that, does that need to be nailed down as well?
The calibration, well, the estimate came in at twenty-seven hundred, because that's a full day worth of work.
Okay.
He said hopefully it's not that much, but he was just kind of.
So it'd be, that would be the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be the cap on that, but, yeah, in the small purchase agreement, I was, I had twenty-five thousand as the limit, so like if I had to come back, then after that, we would revisit that.
So i- if the installation ran to the full ten.
I think even then we're at like twenty-two range.
Okay.
So I was trying to give some wiggle room. And I mean, I can bring it back also, I mean, if we could go ahead and approve the order of the meter, because it's five to six weeks out and we kind of gotta get it coming.
Yeah, that was kind of my question, right?
I could always bring the actual installation cost back the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'd feel more comfortable.
I would too, I would too, right? So. Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the new influent flow meter at a cost of nine thousand, five hundred dollars for the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Remember for closing offices, October second and third.
Uh, this is for training for Shanda, myself and Gretchen. This will also allow all of us to sandbox a little bit with the new software system we'll be switching to. We were all able to attend last year and it was very, very helpful, especially as we were all still pretty new dealing with all of the different systems. They do have breakout sessions, so it's, if one or two of us go, we can kind of get the majority of things, but then somebody's gonna have to relay a lot of messages back and forth, whereas if Gretchen can attend the two things she really needs to attend, Shanda can attend two things we all really need to attend and I can attend the other two things that, one, I, I'm the only one who needs to attend or. Vice versa, it's just helpful if we can have all of us go. But that does mean like that we would have to close the office to accepting payments and things on those two days. It's a Thursday and Friday, we, we'd still have the phones on, there would still be Mary and Jesse here, it's just they're not able to accept payments from customers. We didn't have too many issues last year, I don't believe. We, I mean, it was probably nice for Mary to have us all gone and get a bunch of work done. Because last year I think it was just Mary, I'm not sure if you had an assistant, but.
I'm sure.
So I'm just requesting permission for us all to attend and register and get our hotels squared up before actually doing so.
And the total cost not to exceed a thousand dollars or up to?
Yeah, so if we do the one oh nine, plus the one ninety-nine times three, it's like nine twenty-four.
Yeah, the most expensive part is the training, cost of the training time.
Plus travel would go on top of that, right?
Yeah, travel and then the hotel, but it's still cheaper than having them come up here for just a day. But I am still, I meet tomorrow to get our quote for the new system, because he wanted to explain it before just sending it. So I will meet with him tomorrow over Zoom so that he can kind of explain all the breakdowns. But like I'm predicting, we will have to switch to it a little bit sooner than later. I was hoping maybe not to switch till twenty twenty-seven, but our contract with Invoice Cloud ends in October of next year, if I remember correctly. And because the new software system will have its own online payment portal, it'll get conflicting and our invoice cloud renews on a three-year term. So we can either ask Jackson to have them adjust the renewal to a one-year term and see if they would agree to that, which would give us a little bit more leeway, but I am not holding out for that, which is why I went ahead and told them to give us a quote. And like that, then this training allows us to see a lot of that. And get a little more hands-on before we get it and actually get the hands-on training once we've purchased.
I'd make a motion that we allow the three to attend this training and have the office closed for October second and third.
I'll second.
Okay, so how do we communicate the office close, like will it make a Middlebury Matters or will it?
We do have it planned for the Middlebury Matters, we can also put a sign on the door.
Well, sure, sure.
And we can put a notice out even on Facebook and we could probably put it in the memo on the water bills itself. So there's definitely ways that we can communicate it, which is part of the reason I'm asking for it early enough, so we.
Yeah, well, I think as much as you can do ahead of time saves those that are remaining.
Sorry, I apologize, Ken, did you second?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, you have a motion in a second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to the veterans memorial wall.
So in your packet there was some information, a couple of years ago, Robert came forth with an idea of a veterans memorial wall along the north side of the cemetery to permanently honor the veterans buried at Grace Lawn Cemetery. We shared the vision, Robert's vision with JPR, who then prepared the drawings that are in your packet. And they did a preliminary engineer's estimate and they did all of that at no cost to the town, because they believe in, in this project. So with next year being the celebration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States of America, it seems like a fitting time to work towards the construction of this memorial wall. As long as the town council feels that it's the right thing to do at that location. We've shared this with the American Legion Post and it seems like everyone likes the idea, just maybe not agreeing on all the, all the little details and maybe even the proposed location. There's some that think that it needs to be out closer to East Warren Street to showcase it. We, we just feel that it needs to be a place where it's quiet, where people can go and if they need to grieve or just sit in quiet.
Privacy.
Yeah, privacy, so we have irrigation lines that run from East Warren Street up to the north side of the cemetery. Electrical power can come from Donna State Subdivision. So Robert's talked with several people about possibly either donating labor, donating bills or purchasing the materials at cost. And we just believe this could be a great community project. So and there's different grants that we could reach out and possibly apply for here in Elkhart County. And we also believe that there's people interested in donating towards this, the construction of this wall. It'd be great to have it done by July fourth of next year. So, but there's lots of ideas, there's lots of different things that we can do, I think that we need to have committees. So, and I mean, I've already had somebody say if this goes forward, put me down for a thousand dollars, so I, I just, I feel it's the right way of honoring our veterans. They, they have, some gave it all, you know, and it's a permanent way of putting their name on a wall that'll be there forever.
Yep.
So, I just, before we move forward with doing it, I just wanted to make sure that council is on board with that decision.
So one comment, I am fully on board. Right, wearing my Marine Corps shirt, and would willingly serve on any committee to help steer it. It's a big thing to me. Any of you that have ever visited any well-done memorials know that it's a, it's an impact of thing. And I think a proper honoring of the many veterans that we have, you know, buried in this cemetery.
I think there's over, what, four hundred, there's over four hundred.
That's, I mean, come on, from a townhouse size.
This is Robert's. This is Robert's, I, I'm not gonna take credit for it, I'm like up here, standing up here, but Robert came forth with this idea, and it's a great idea.
It is, it absolutely is. Yep, yep. I, I see no reason not to pursue it, um, and, and, you know, try to get to the nitty-gritties, right? What would it cost, I, I, what, you know, what can, what donations can we get? I mean, I think we could even reach out directly to the VA, Robert, and if I serve on a committee, I'd be more than happy to do that. Um, so, yeah, I, I think it's a great thing, and would love to see it.
Yeah, I, I'm in favor. I think we all need to, I, I think we've all spoken that way, that we're all in favor of it.
Yeah.
I don't want to speak for everybody, but, you know, that's been out there for a while, and we just kind of let it sit, because, you know, there's other projects going on.
Yeah.
But, you're right, having this done near our nation's tw- two hundred and fiftieth birthday would be great.
It'd be awesome.
Mm-hmm.
So, it'd be awesome.
We've, um, shared it too with, um, like, the landscape committee, and, um, they're, like, they're excited to, like, give some input on the landscaping of what ki- I, I'm not a landscaper, um, so I think their input's valuable, I, I just think there's a lot of different groups that we could pull from.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Did I forget anything? Okay.
So, wh- what, what, what steps would you like the council to take in support?
I think, I don't know, Jackson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it would be good to have, like, some type of motion stating that.
To, uh, support it?
To pursue it, and support it, or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, at Grace Lawn. Because I mean, you could put it anywhere.
Something on the record.
Yeah.
So I will gleefully, um, make a motion that we, uh, recognize the importance that we pursue all avenues to make this happen by the July fourth, and show our support, um, to make this memorial happen.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion in a second, any other comments, questions? All of them heavily said? Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, Water Tower number two, we had an addition for that?
Yeah, yeah, so last week, we had a meeting with IDEM, um, and their consultant, and also JPR, um, to determine what the steps would be to, um, take that Water Tower number two at US twenty out of service. So, um, they need a report with, um, pressure, you know, information about pressure and volume, um, and make sure that the system has the ability if we remove that. Um, which, most of that's already done, Steve and the Water Department's done quite a bit of getting pressure tests, um, a master plan with the new towers, and, you know, and a, a, um, timeline of how the projects would happen with, you know, getting the new tower online, taking this one out, and then getting another new tower at some point in time in the future. Um, and then, but, it, we would need to also upgrade the PER preliminary engineering report, so that we can use the SRF funding to take down Tower number two. So, um, JPR gave me, um, an estimate of not to exceed five thousand dollars to do all of this work, because a lot of it's already done. Um, it just, there's pieces that need to be pulled together to submit to the, um, IDEM's consultant, so we can get their approval. So I'm asking for your consideration, um, to spend up to five thousand dollars, we'll bring the, the, um, agreement, or a, an agreement amendment back at the next council meeting. They just didn't have time to get it all pulled and submitted. But I want them to keep moving, because of the US twenty project, um, because it all goes hand in hand.
They're looking for approval to spend up to five thousand.
Yes.
Yeah. Right. Well, I will make a motion that we approve, uh, the expenditure not to exceed five thousand dollars to pull together the Water Tower number two report. Um, that will list all of the things that the town manager just mentioned. Because I'm not repeating.
I'll, I'll second.
I have a motion in a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcements, uh, there will be an executive session immediately following this meeting. Uh, the Elkhart County Regional Sewer District Meeting on August sixth at six thirty PM in the Public Services Building. Elkhart County Redevelopment Commission Meeting on August seventh at two PM in the Public Services Building. Middlebury Tree Board Meeting on August seventh at seven PM here at the Town Hall. Elkhart County Plant Committing Meeting on August fourteenth at nine AM in the Public Services Building. Elkhart County Plant Com- Commission Meeting on August fourteenth at nine thirty AM in the Public Services Building. And the Middlebury Town Council Meeting on August eighteenth at six PM here at the Town Hall, and we are adjourned.